To report out actions taken in closed session.
We have one action. On a six to zero vote with trustee Pendergrass absent in closed session, we voted to approve the settlement of a pending litigation prior to judicial proceedings pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 dot one, parenthesis three. The substance of the agreement included a settlement of all claims by a former manager slash administrator in an action not to exceed $75,000, which includes attorney's fee.
Thank you for that, trustee Wright. Now I will have the invocation led by me and the pleasure of the agents led by trustee Lang.
All right. Well, I guess a point of personal note here. I recently returned from my ancestral homeland of Armenia. After a thirteen-year hiatus, I went there over the Memorial Day break. And among the many challenges and changes that I witnessed was a path towards a more open civil society based on protecting individual liberties and implementing democratic reforms. While there will be undoubtedly some setbacks in the future, the long-term path for my homeland is very positive and I believe irreversible. This movement is in stark contrast to most of Armenia's neighbors and is a disturbing worldwide trend away from democracy toward authoritarian regimes. But there's no question in my mind that the democratic strides that Armenia is taking is due to one thing, and that's the primacy of education. Public and private education is flourishing throughout Armenia, including through the University of California's American University of Armenia, at which I actually taught in 2000 and 2001. And that university is flourishing. An educated society is one which will more likely respect human rights and individual liberties, which are the core values which we all cherish. Education is so powerful and it's immense. The power of education is immense, beyond what we do here every day worldwide. And I can't think of a more enduring export that our country could promote beyond education. So thank you for that.
Are there any requests for public comments? No requests for public comments? All right. And I will now turn to board reports. Trustee Witt.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming in June. I just wanted to share with you that I was really, really touched once again after all the forty-some commencements that I've gone to. Once again, it was striking, the smiles, the accomplishments that we could see on people's faces, and I appreciated so much, so many faculty and administrators coming. I think we need to salute our students. That is part of what we do. I also attended Health Sciences graduation because I always told my students that that is not ceremony, that is your graduation. Commencement is your graduation. But it always touches my heart, Human Services. For the speakers that were there, they were wonderful, and they come from the heart. And I'm glad to see that so many accomplish their goals. So let's go to a fine summer and into August. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Subsequent to our last board meeting, I too, along with trustee Witt, attended some of the most auspicious events of the year, the culmination of all of our hard work, the commencements. I attended the Saddleback College Human Services graduation, which is always, as trustee Witt said, an event of the heart. And the Saddleback and Irvine Valley commencements were just, which were magnificent. They were just wonderful events and shaking hundreds of thousands of students' hands and seeing their happy faces and the fact that their lives were going to be changed forever made all of us feel this is all worth it. I also was on Laguna Woods TV. And the link to my interview is on the district's Facebook page. One friend sent this link to the entire membership of one of my organizations that I'm in. And I was delighted that so many friends actually watched this interview and really understand firsthand what the wonderful things that our community colleges do. The Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force met for the last time in June at the Coast Community College District, will convene again in September. And in September, in the upcoming academic year, it will be at Rancho Community College District of Santa Ana. We reviewed the structure of the organization, and I was so honored to learn that the structure of the organization is exactly the same as the way I wrote it and the campaign plan so many years ago. They're doing exactly the same structure, and I felt really good about that. The, we were given a federal and state legislative update, talking about the remainder of the state legislative sessions and the progress of some of the bills that our task force took positions on. The funding of the majority of the capital outlay requests were approved, including funding for the Irvine Valley College Fine Arts Building. And I'm delighted that trustee Jamal and I, along with chancellor Burke, president Stern, and Letitia Clark, were able to successfully advocate for the funding for this upcoming building at Irvine Valley College. Several other things that we learned, that we talked about, the pension liability funding was approved with $3 billion for both Cal Sturs and Cal Pers for over the next three years. The number of Cal grants given by the state has nearly doubled, and the funding remains intact for the California Community College Online College. So please let me know if there's any legislative issues that you'd like our task force to deal with. We've been very successful over the years, and we'd be happy to take up those issues with all the four community college districts in Orange County. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Milchiker. Trustee Wright.
Thank you. The commencement season was particularly special for me this year. It began on Wednesday, May the 22nd, 2019, where I attended at 6:00 PM the Human Services Program graduation that's already been mentioned. It was held again at Saddleback College. A number of students were honored for their accomplishments. On Thursday, May the 23rd, I attended the practice for the IVC commencement ceremony held at 10:00 AM in the morning at the Live Oak Terrace for IVC. Later that afternoon, on May the 23rd, at 3:30, I attended the Saddleback College commencement ceremony practice. This was held at the gym. Then finally, on Friday, May the 24th, was the commencement ceremonies for both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. The commencement ceremony for Saddleback College was held at 9:00 AM in the gym. The ceremony for IVC was held at 5:00 in the afternoon at the Live Oak Center Terrace for IVC. I was honored to provide a congratulatory message for both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. I also had the honor to do the conferral of degrees and certificates on all of the students present at the commencement ceremony. Let me give my sincere thanks to President Elliot Stern and for President Glenn Rockmore for their leadership in organizing the two outstanding commencement ceremonies. Lastly, I'd like to just congratulate our chancellor Kathleen Burke for being elected to a three-year term to serve as an elected commissioner for the Accreditation Commission for Community and Junior Colleges. This is a great honor and great news for the district.
Thank you, trustee Wright. Also, my report, I'll be brief. I, for the first time since I've been a trustee, I attended the Human Services graduation and it has been mentioned. But if ever there was a moment that captures what we do here, it's that graduation. And it was really wonderfully done, very moving. And I'll try to make an effort to be there every year going forward. I did miss commencement, I think, for the first time in seven years. I was at another commencement. My daughter graduated from Swarthmore College outside of Philadelphia, so we were there for that commencement ceremony. But I did watch the YouTube versions of it, and it looked outstanding, both at IVC and Saddleback. And congratulations to all of you. Thank you. Trustee Jay.
For my board report, I'd like to give some information from the Board of Governors of the IVC Foundation. At the scholarship ceremony on May 15th, the IVC Foundation announced that they were awarding over $500,000 in scholarships, which is a record. They raised over $1 million this year, which is the third consecutive year they have reached this milestone. The IVC Foundation got a jump start on next year. They scheduled the IVC Foundation Awards Dinner for Saturday, March 14th, at the same place, Feta Le venue. It was the same location as last year. And that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. I also want to briefly mention the college commencements. Again, both presidents did an absolutely marvelous job in organizing those events. It really is one of the highlights of the year, as far as I'm concerned as trustee, because, you know, you get to watch really all of the efforts that we expend throughout the year on behalf of students, congratulating them on earning their degrees. It's just a wonderful ceremony. I also made the supreme sacrifice of representing the Board of Trustees at the Saddleback Community College Athletic Golf Tournament. I hope you all appreciate that.
I was there last year.
Yeah, John Williams and I were in Forsheim together. Also a fun event. Managed to see our vice chancellor, Anne Marie Gables, there as well. And I think it was a very successful tournament on behalf of the, for-
What was your score?
Our group, our group was actually fifteen under. We did very well. It took considerably more than that to win, however. So, you know, a major focus of tonight's meeting is going to be on the financial matters, including the approval of next year's fiscal tentative budget. One area that I think I've been particularly proud of while serving on this board is what I think has been our good fiscal stewardship of the district. And of course, with lots of kudos and help from our outstanding community college leadership team in this area as well. And, you know, again, I think we're a blessed district, but I think we also are good at managing our resources. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Student trustee Urarte.
Good afternoon, everyone. My report. On May 22nd, I attend the Orange County School Board Association Seminar with Kevin Gordon. He is current, he used to be Executive Director of the California Association of School Business Officials. He's currently an advisor for the Orange County School Board Association. And during this seminar, he shares many legislations that the Orange County School Board Association is supporting in favor of the older schools, the K-12 schools, budget negotiation, support for different programs in benefit of our younger generation. Since summer semester started on June 17, students like me, we've been like very busy trying to get books, schedule classes, and start this short semester. However, I'm glad that we have scheduled a meeting with the ASG presidents of Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College for tomorrow, June 25th, at 10:00 AM. Faculty advisors from both colleges will be there, will be present too, to just openly talk, discuss, and share ideas about what we can do in favor of our student population. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Chancellor's report.
I'd like to also talk about what's been going on in the state as it relates to the budget. As trustee Milchiker mentioned, there are, there was an expansion of competitive Cal grants, and those, the state will be able to serve 15,000 more students with the increase in the competitive Cal grant. And those awards will go primarily to community college students. AB 291 and AB 1314, which were both in, both related to financial aid, the authors of those bills have decided to make them two-year bills so that we can continue to make progress on revamping financial aid so that it doesn't only cover fees, but that it also covers living expenses and food and so forth. So that's still an interest that we have in the state. On a positive note, there have been mental health, $7 million in one-time Proposition 63 Mental Health Funds for Student Mental Health Services. And then also an interest of the board under non-academic barriers having to do with, with food insecurity and housing insecurity. There is $500,000 one-time funds to create a support, a study of student hunger and to create effective practices in reducing student hunger. $9 million in ongoing Prop 98 funds, the downside is that it does come out of Prop 98, but it is a set aside, to support a rapid rehousing pilot program. Earlier in the legislative session, the Rapid Rehousing Project was only for the UCs and the CSUs. And then only about a week ago, this additional $9 million was put in for community colleges to do rapid rehousing. And then 3.9 million one-time Prop 98 funds to support student basic needs. So I think we should keep an eye on all of those funds. What we don't know is how they will be distributed. So that's the next part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. College presidents' reports. Looks like Irvine Valley College.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think most of the events that we had there in May have been mentioned. Thank you to everyone who attended those. It is a very gratifying time of year. We've recognized our newly tenured faculty and those that are marching their way through to that goal. Recognized our early college students right before our regular commencement, and also the scholarship program, as well as a campus recognition ceremony that was exciting to be a part of as well. Got to join trustee Wright in giving out certificates there. Other than that, we're spending the summer trying to get as much scheduled maintenance done as we can. We opened a new parking lot. We've been doing some parking lot slurry and restriping. We're trying to catch up on some of our ADA obligations, wheelchair ramps, getting the correct slope on those. So there's concrete work related to that. We've done a complete infrastructure underground mapping of the campus, and in that process we found pipes to nowhere and certainly had those abandoned that had been in for, you know, forty or so years there. So it's been a busy summer. We're working hard to get the campus up and ready because summer is just about over, believe it or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Saddleback College.
Trustees, very quickly, I want to add to the congratulations to chancellor Burke for being appointed commissioner for ACCJC, having previously worked at an institution where the CEO was also a commissioner for our creditor. I cannot begin to tell you how valuable it is to have a voice in what becomes future trends, but also to have an ear on what those future trends are for our own compliance and our own college. So I appreciate that and congratulate chancellor Burke in that honor. I want to share a couple of quick data points that we didn't manage to get into the board report for you that I think you'll find as exciting as I do. First, in zero-cost textbook classes, our OER classes, we will increase from fall 2018 to fall 2019 from 5.3% of total class sections to 14.5% of all class sections offered at Saddleback College, featuring zero-cost textbooks, nearly tripling the rate of zero-cost textbooks in just one year. In a similar vein, we've done some gap analysis to see what courses were needed to be able to switch from offering more courses online to more degrees and certificates online. And through fulfillment of that gap analysis in very short order, we will be offering 43 fully online degrees and certificates as of fall of this year, this year, not next, this year. Forty-three all online degrees and certificates. So we're very proud of that. And finally, I'd like to make some introductions to some new members of our leadership team at Saddleback College. So first, this one may come as a surprise to you, and please don't panic because it's interim. I would like to introduce Dr. Scott Farthing. You may know Dr. Farthing from his good work as faculty since 2005 in Fine Arts. Dr. Farthing has agreed with great arm twisting to step up and serve as interim dean of Fine Arts for the next year as we figure out where we're going with that position in that area and try to, to help develop some stability there, which is long overdue. I promise trustee Milchiker and others that our performances will stay just as high quality, and Dr. Farthing will be there to help me with that. So welcome, Scott. I also want to welcome a couple of permanent employees. And both of these permanent employees, I'd like to point out, are laterals. They come from the same or similar positions at other institutions, and that speaks to the district's ability to attract the very best people. So first, I would like to introduce Liz McCann. Liz was the executive director for the foundation at Long Beach College and is now going to be our executive director of Saddleback's foundation. So we're very glad to have Liz aboard. Welcome, Liz. And then finally tonight, I want to thank especially Dr. Dee Oliveri, who actually drove up for this occasion to meet you all. She doesn't start till July 1st. Dee, if you would stand up for just a brief moment. Thank you so much. Dr. Oliveri is our new assistant dean of Health Sciences, so she'll be the director of the nursing program in that role. And she had a similar role at Grossmont College. And we are very, very excited to have a person of her experience and talent and skills with us heading our nursing program, something we're all very, very proud of. So I want to welcome those new employees and introduce them to you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Now we'll have the ASG of Saddleback College.
Hello. Hello, trustees and members of- Okay. First time. I'm extremely honored to be here. My name is Jake Ribzik. I am the president of the Associated Student Government at Saddleback College. I just want to start off and say a few things. I'm extremely grateful to be here and to be able to represent Saddleback College and to share all the great things that our ASG is doing. I also want to add that I feel extremely fortunate for the guidance that I've had from past ASG presidents, like our former president Perry Mead, and for the strong support that we have at Saddleback College. And that comes from people like president Stern and our ASG advisor. Now on to what our ASG has been doing. And really, we've been taking the summer to transition into a new administration. So we're looking at a great turnover. We're probably going to be going into fall with around 40 members, which is very strong compared to past ASGs. And to do that, ourself, myself and the vice president, we've had to carry out interviews, and we've had to fill up not just our executive team, but the committees alike. We've been working on negotiations with OCTA to get a college bus pass program, but we're really looking at the best way that we can fund it to ensure that we're giving the best package to our students. And then we've been working on procedural things. So we've been updating our bylaws, our website, and we're even going to be voting on two resolutions later this week, one on affordable housing and another on a meditation room. So yeah, with that said, I'm going to emphasize one more time that I am looking forward to a new school year. I'm looking forward to work, to working with all of our college partners, with IVC, with our student trustee, with the board. And I'm excited to ensure that the promises we've made to students are kept and that the voices of students are heard. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jake. Perry was awesome, but it's great to have you here and welcome. And let us know about the OCTA. Some of us have had some dealings with them, including myself. If you want any help on reaching out to them, just let me know.
Thank you. I will definitely keep the board updated on that.
Okay. Great. All right. We have, I can't really see your name badge. You have ASG IVC.
It's all right. I'll say it. I'm Feraskati, new ASG of IVC president incoming. I just want to say thank you guys for giving me a little, let me introduce myself today. Just a little report about what's been going on. Students started classes, summer classes. Been exciting. Taken three this summer myself, so it's going to be pretty rigorous. Just things I've been doing on campus. I've been helping our student government work on our pride celebration, starting in two days. It's going to be our third one this school year, so it's going to be exciting. So it's going to be on June 26. Certain things I've been doing in the past month or so, I went to the district-wide planning retreat, which was exciting. I saw some familiar faces there. Went to the Board of Governors meeting where I had been introduced really well, welcomed really well. I'd also seen president Rockmore there, super welcoming. It was a good introduction to the school year. Yeah, so just things I've been doing. Trying to continue the work that Matt Rosborough has been doing, previous president, working on mental health and also the OCTA bus travel pass as well. Is some things I'm working with the student government director as well. So more to come in the future reports. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for that and welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any requests for board reports. Any board members want to press a report? Moving forward, we now are on to our main and only discussion item, the tentative budget. So I assume that's vice chancellor Gable.
Actually, Kim McCord's going to do it.
All right. I stand corrected. Kim McCord.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to walk you through our presentation here. Here's the agenda. We're going to walk through the board philosophy and guidelines, the actual budget numbers, our budget assumptions, briefly review our basic aid allocation, and then look at some budget trends and next steps for us. So this is our tentative budget. It is our draft budget that we go into the year with on July 1st. Through the end of July, we will get our fiscal year closed, and the state budget will be finalized hopefully this week. And with that information, we'll prepare our adopted budget that we'll bring to you in August. So our board philosophy is that we ensure wise and prudent use of public resources, as trustee Lang mentioned earlier. We promote the financial strength and stability of our district, and we maximize educational opportunities for our students. So these are the 10 budget development guidelines that we try to follow. The first one's real important, where we set our reserve for economic uncertainties at a minimum of seven and a half percent so that we remain stable. All of these are outlined a little further in the budget book on pages six through eight, if you want to read those at your time. So this is an overall view of all of our funds. We have our beginning balance that we're expected to end the year with. That's our estimate right now. The revenues that we anticipate receiving, the expenditures that we have budgeted. The next column is a new one you haven't seen before. It's surplus or deficit. So that is just the difference between the revenues and expenses. And anything in red showing a deficit means we are actually planning to spend more than we're taking in. We're going to use some of that beginning balance. And most of that time, it's intentional. Like our capital outlay fund, you can see our beginning balance is $287 million. Most of that's allocated for projects. In fact, a good chunk of it's already obligated in contracts. But it is a balance that's there, and it's budgeted to be expended on our projects through next year. So in our unrestricted general fund, we have a beginning estimated balance of $55 million. That includes our current contingency, our current reserve for our basic aid. It includes what the colleges thinks they've saved so that they can put that aside to help make their budget stable as well. And some of that is planned to be spent down in the year with an estimated ending balance of $33 million. So as an overview of the total funds that are available, we have our beginning, same beginning balance of $589 million, sorry, and our revenues of $490. So that's our total available funds of just under $1 billion for all of our funds. It's the first time I think our number's been that high. These are the expenses that we budgeted in the categories. For unrestricted general fund, you can see the largest portion is, of course, our salary and benefits. And the other large number, the other uses is, the most, most of that is our transfer to the capital outlay fund for our basic aid projects. And you can see the capital outlay fund, most of that $370 million is all budgeted for our capital outlay projects. So some of the assumptions that went into building our budget, it's based on the May revise. We have received more information since, but we don't have time to incorporate them. We will get all of those changes in the adopted budget. We are implementing the student-centered funding formula. If you recall, this came in so late last year, we stuck with our SB 361 model for 1819. So we now are transitioning to that model. It does include a 3.26% COLA, no-growth funding, and hold harmless of 3.3 million. So what the state said is with this new formula, there would be several years of hold harmless, and that is based on the 1718 calculation for revenue plus- And that is based on the '17-'18 calculation for revenue, plus '18-'19 COLA, and now plus '19-'20 COLA. So that amount is actually $3.3 million higher than what our funding calculates to be. So we will budget with that higher number as we transition fully into that formula. But the overall increase to our operating budgets is $1.1 million. So we are providing new funds for our colleges. The property tax revenue increase is at 3.5%. That's just an estimate based on the information we received from the county. And our enrollment fees are still at $46 a unit. Salary increases in the budget include step-in column increases and everything that's been negotiated up till today. PERS approved rate is 20.733. Now this, the budget is not finalized yet, but there is money supposed to be going into STIRS and PERS. And we just got last week that rate is probably going to be 19.721. So a full percentage lower when we get to the adopted budget. The STIRS had already been reduced, but the final number we now are seeing is 17.1. So a tiny bit lower than the 17.13 that's in the tentative budget. Health and welfare expenses, we did a 6% estimate, which is trending with everyone else. But again, our numbers are coming in lower. I think we really have good experience and a good plan. So the number's going to be less than 2% when we get to our adopted budget. Unemployment is still at 0.05%. And our workers' comp is estimated at 1.7. That actually will probably go down as well, as we've had good experience in that. We have set our 7.5% reserve for economic uncertainties at $14.2 million. And we have the additional reserve for unrealized tax collections. That's our basic aid reserve of $16.4 million. We have our property and liability insurance budgeted at $1 million. And all of our categorical funding, we do 95% of what we had last year. And then over the next few months, when we get our final allocations, we'll do budget revisions, and you'll see those come to you. The Education Protection Act revenue is estimated at just under $2.7 million. It's $100 per FTES, and we use those funds for part-time faculty salary and benefits. And then we are now including our apartment complex revenue in this part of our operating budget. It's at $2.8 million for this next year. So just a quick recap. You've already approved these basic aid funds, but we estimate a $28 million beginning balance for that piece with receipts of $82 million. These are our excess property taxes for a total of $110 million that were available. A small piece that we didn't allocate because of changing in funding. And our 20% contingency, as I mentioned, $16.4 million. So we did allocate $93 million. And here are the categories. That first one, 5.8, includes the 5.1 normal cost for our retiree benefits that we put in every year. That's based on our new actuarial. And we had a .6 million liability, unfunded liability that we were funding as well. And you can see the other categories that we went over previously with you. So some budget trends. As with the prior years, we are conflicting with our budget guidelines in that we are using one-time funds for our ongoing expenses when we balance our budget. That was that red negative that you saw. Our personnel costs make up an average of 88.2% of our total budget, which is actually down slightly from the '18-'19 years, so I think that's a good trend. And our state COLA and growth have not been adequate to support our increased personnel costs over the past several years. So some of these costs that are going up, of course, are health and welfare. Although we did well, it still is an increase we have to cover. Our STIRS and PERS rates, as we know, are going up. And then, of course, salaries, we have negotiated increases, the step-in column, and then stipends and additional payments that we make. So this chart for the PERS and STIRS, it's going to change as we get those updated percentages. We do have enough in our pension stability trust to fund through '21-'22, which reimburses the colleges and district services each quarter for what we've spent beyond that '15-'16 rate. But you can see when we hit '22-'23, if we don't come up with a plan, we're going to be hit with about a $13 million operating expense that we'll need to cover. And that's an annual amount. And the PERS rates, I know the highest here is 24.9. I think two years out, it goes actually to 26.5. So STIRS is relatively stable, around that 18%, but PERS is expected to go even higher. So some of our next steps and challenges. Our revenue increases, again, are not keeping pace with their ongoing cost increases. We are monitoring our STIRS and PERS increases. Our enrollment trends, we are not growing, and so we need to look at how we can do that. The final state budget information will be included in the adopted budget. We hope to have that any day. And then we're continuing to monitor the SCFF changes. They have changed some of the metrics, the way they're counted. I know we just saw some new rates for our transfers. That's the big one that's going to change, where they're not going to let every college count them. So our numbers are expected to go down in that category, which will impact our calculation. But again, we're hold harmless. We have, I think, the '21-'22, we will be held harmless, so that will help us with that transition. Questions? I'm sure there are a few, and Vice Chancellor Gable and I will be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation, Kim.
Sure.
Trustee Lang.
So, Kim, I think the only, the one slide, and I probably should have pressed this in the past, but I'm going to want a little deeper dive on this, is the first of the budget trends that you've indicated here about how the tentative budget conflicts with the board's budget guidelines, specifically where we're in conflict and whether we ought to be considering modifying the policy so that we're not in conflict with it, or if, in fact, we're all in agreement that that's what the policy should be, sticking with the policy. So I need to hear a little bit more about that.
Want me to take this, sir? All right, I'll take this one. So what we have done, I think, in this year, we have followed the policy where we have allocated the, utilizing the student-centered funding formula. And so that is the basic method that we've used to allocate the revenues to the colleges. So that is something that has been followed in the current year of following that method. As far as ongoing expenditures exceeding our ongoing revenues, some of that, we don't have exactly how much is one-time versus ongoing. You know, what we're showing is just the picture of everything, and we don't have the breakdown between what is ongoing versus what is one-time. So some of those expenditures would be one-time expenditures, and they are intentional spend downs of the ending balances. Should, I guess your question was, should we change the policy? I would say not at this time. I don't see a need to change the policy. You know, we are working on how we can try to reduce our expenditures. I think, as Kim mentioned, as our salaries and benefits and PERS and STIRS and software licenses and everything else continue to go up, it does put more and more pressure on all of the entities to try to continue to spend in the areas that's most needed to serve our students best with the limited amount of revenue that's coming in. So the additional revenue that we get from the state for COLA isn't enough to cover our increase in expenditures. So that's always going to be a pressure. And in the past, it's been a little bit easier to try to absorb that difference, but it's getting harder and harder for the districts to do it as our health and welfare in PERS and STIRS are going up, I would say astronomically, from where they used to be in the past.
You're not really satisfying my need for specific, well, I can't even say the word. Specificity, thank you. And I'm looking, again, for a little deeper dive here to tell us, okay, where are we violating our own policy?
Sorry.
And I'm just not, I'm not yet satisfied.
Friendly interjection.
Thank you.
So I believe in our latest round of board policy revisions, we made some slight language changes. And then it came to the full board here to recognize that this was occurring, these spending that was not just one-time. But I need better recollection. I think we should go back and look at the policy and see what the language says.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily need for you to answer this, but I think, and I don't know whether this needs to take the form of a board report, but it's certainly something that I'm very interested in.
Well, and you can see it on, of the budget book, pages 26 and 27. So at the bottom of that page, you'll see the surplus deficit, and it's green highlighted boxes. And that will tell you, you know, for each entity between Saddleback, Irvine Valley, District Services, our basic aid money and other, how we're spending down the money. You know, one of the things that we've done in the past is we've budgeted the entire beginning fund balance. And so that's been budgeted typically in the $5,000, the services and other operating. So we haven't had the habit of intentionally leaving an ending balance. You see, IVC has left $3 million in theirs, but the other areas...
Right, but Saddleback completely spent down their beginning balance.
Correct. Saddleback completely spent theirs. District Services is showing that, although District Services, it's budgeted up in the $5,000. So as we start to show it this way, we'll get better at determining how much are we really going to spend down, because we don't always spend down everything that we budget. And so we need to get better at only budgeting what we think we're going to spend and leaving ourselves an ending fund balance, which will lessen that amount. So that's why I said it's hard to differentiate at this point in time between ongoing versus one-time. And some of it is intentional spending down, like in the basic aid on page 27. That $10.6 million deficit, that's an intentional spend down because we only leave 20% of what's there. That's our policy, to leave 20%. And so we spend everything else, or we budget to spend everything else, you know? So that's intentional. So it really depends on which pot of money we're looking at, if it's one-time versus ongoing.
Okay. And I'm also looking at, on the budget, exhibit A 20, for example, page 20. Are there projects here that were, that you're considering to be not one-time projects that are being paid for out of basic aid? Is that, is that part of the issue? Where we're violating our own policy, if you will?
Yes, some of this is ongoing expenditures. You know, I would say the retiree benefits expense on page 20, the legislative advocacy services.
Right.
Those two, those are ongoing expenditures that we are...
And that's kind of where I'm going with this. And that is, I think if we were going to modify, in fact, I do remember in a prior year where we did, for example, take out of basic aid the amount that we needed to settle the contracts in negotiations. I don't think we've necessarily been doing that consistently, but we did make the decision to do that in one year, which was clearly a violation of our policy, which I wasn't too thrilled about. But there are some...
Have not done that this year.
Right. But there are some items here that I could see you being, you know, being characterized as not one-time expenditures. And if that's going to be something that we consistently do, that may be an instance of where we ought to modify the policy so that we are in line with what our values are here. It bothers me when I see that every year to say, here's our policy, but by the way, we're not following it.
Right.
That's a problem to me.
Yeah, and we are, again, we have looked at Board Policy 3110 and Administrative Regulation 3110, which is the guiding principles behind our basic aid funds. And we are updating that. That will go to the Board Policy Subcommittee at the next meeting and run through. And we have tried to make some clarifications within that language of what's allowed within basic aid so that we're spelling some of those things out and making it a little bit more clear. So from that standpoint, yes, we are going to be proposing a policy change. But I think in general, the overarching higher goal of ongoing revenues meeting your ongoing expenses, I think is still a valid policy and position that we should try to hold. So that was kind of why I said, no, I don't think we should. But obviously, there are always, you know, tweaks and things that we've made intentionally to help out the colleges so that we can best meet the needs of our students.
My suggestion, just speaking as one board member, is this is a conversation that we need to closely have between administration and the Board of Trustees. I agree.
All right, thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, just on page nine of the PowerPoint presentation, it talks about the student-centered, I'm sorry, the student-centered funding formula. And I think we're being, we're going to be held harmless for three years. First of all, is this the very first year that the state's holding us harmless with the new funding formula that they've implemented?
So the student-centered funding formula went into effect for the '18-'19 fiscal year. You may recall that we chose not to implement it in '18-'19. And so our first year of implementation is '19-'20. Within the state budget, there is a proposal to extend the hold harmless for an additional year through '21-'22. And so that is what is in the budget bill at the moment. And then we'll see, as we get closer to that, if they extend it again.
And then my other question about it, it says that in it, the hold harmless is $3.3 million. Does that mean the new student-centered funding formula, which is kind of a tongue twister? With that formula, we're actually bringing in $3.3 million less than we brought in with the old funding formula? Is that what that means?
Correct.
So does that mean we have to learn how to kind of work with the new funding formula to make sure that we could bring in our revenues to be equal to what they used to be in the, when we had the old funding formula, before the new funding formula was implemented?
Yes, and I think we are looking at those things. You know, we were one of the districts that was disadvantaged a little bit by the three pots of money. So with, and I'll call it SCFF for short. So with SCFF, there's three pots that go into the formula. You have your base allocation, which is your FTES, so that was our old formula, and that's 70% of the money. And then you have a supplemental allocation, which represents 20% of the money. And that goes to districts, well, everybody, for the number of Pell recipients and the number of California Promise Fee waiver recipients and the number of AB 540. We are a district who has many fewer of those students than other districts. And so I think that piece of the funding there is a disadvantage to us. The last piece of the funding formula is the student success metrics, and that represents 10% of the funding formula, which typically we do better. So when SCFF was originally passed last year, eventually, we were supposed to be at a 60% for base, 20% for supplemental, and 20% for student success. With this year's legislation, they're foregoing changing it, and it will stay at a 70-20-10 split. So from our previous projections under what we thought was going to happen, we would have come out of hold harmless next year. Now that we're going to stay at the 70-20-10 split, we still have to determine if we will come out of hold harmless next year or not. We haven't done those calculations because the rates haven't been established for '19-'20 yet. And they probably will not be established until February of this year, is the way the legislation is. So we're still kind of holding out and seeing how we're going to fare with that. They've also made some changes to how they're defining the metrics that will impact us, that we need to kind of work through those as well. So, you know, the best thing I can say about SCFF is that it's changing, and it's going to continue to change at least another year or so, or potentially two. So it's kind of a work in progress. I think we're fortunate that we do have the hold harmless.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. No additional questions. I have one. Looks like, Kim, you're pretty much off the hook for questions, so I think they're all going Anne Marie. So anytime, I mean, as a trustee, when I see in a presentation revenue not keeping pace with ongoing expenses, that is a concern. So where do we need to look at, Anne Marie? Is it a revenue challenge? Is it a cost challenge? Which one is it?
Both.
Okay.
It really is both. I think, you know, we've, we've been fortunate, I would say, of being a basic aid district to where...
to where we have the ability to weather the storm, yes, thank you, Trustee Lang.
Stop helping her.
You can help me all you like. But it's something that, you know, we need to start paying attention to. And it's going to be a struggle on how do we do that, you know?
So what do we need to pay attention to? When I look at the budget, what do we have? 88% of the budget is salaries and benefits for our employees. So when you look at, I mean, you just, Jim, you're a math person. I mean, you just look at the budget and look at the math. I mean, that's, that's the area that's going to probably be addressed, right? With 88% of our budget-
Yes, that is one of the areas, and that's one of the hardest areas to pay attention to, too. You know, I think what you can look at is your part-time salaries and benefits, your MBUs that you're using, your, you know, all of your part-time folks, are they needed? Are they necessary? Do we need to be the same size that we were four years ago, five years ago? Because we're not serving the same number of students that we were four and five years ago, so should we be decreasing? And I know those are questions that we're all asking ourselves anytime we have a vacancy. We're not just automatically filling vacancies. We are, you know, really looking at them and making an analysis of, do we need that position, or do we need that position somewhere else, or can we go without that position? So it is something that we're looking at, and I think that we will continue to look at it. You know, we are starting to even look at, what are we spending money on? Do we need that? Can we forego that? So those questions are happening-
Are we starting to do that?
Yes. Yes, we have been doing that. So, you know, it's something we're doing. You know, the other thing, when we said it's both, one of the reasons that you see the apartment complex revenue coming into the unrestricted general fund is to help offset that. You know, before, that money just went into the capital outlay fund, and it wasn't being used, but it is ongoing revenue. So we've made that decision to pull that in and run that through the model in order to help increase the revenues, to help offset some of the additional expenses.
So what I would like to see, you know, you already, I think, know this, is for the district and the two colleges to really work together on this and to address these challenges in a meaningful way, so that it's not coming from district or one college or another, that we have a holistic plan here to deal with this challenge, which it is. And so we have to work together as a team. I think the apartment revenue is great, but, I mean, we still have other systemic revenue and cost challenges we need to deal with. So, yes. Mike.
Out of the apartment revenue to pay for the stadium.
That's right.
Yeah, that was on a one, on a one-time basis. But now, each year, we have the, we're not going to be accumulating those funds. It's going to be going into our operating budget each year.
See, the way I look at it, I don't look at it that Saddleback is in deficit, or IBC's in deficit, or it's their problem, they need to deal with it. I mean, we're one district. We have three, two colleges and three campuses. We need a solution, a comprehensive one, that comes collaboratively from all of you. So.
And we're working towards that.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're not voting on this until later.
And if I could, I would just like to thank Kim McCord and Devi Kacatrian and Corey Wathan for all their help on getting the budget together. They put a lot of work and time into it, so we appreciate that. So I just want to thank them.
Thank you as well. Thank you, Kim, and both Corey and Devi. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar, which is 5.0. Does anyone have any polls? Trustee Wright?
I'd like to poll 5.5.
Okay. I was going to do that as well. I think you got a few on that one. All right, any other polls? Okay. Do we have a motion to move the balance of the items? It's a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Lang. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. So we need someone to vote, I think. And the balance of the items, minus 5.5, have been approved by a six-to-zero trustee vote. And student trustee, are you going to vote? You don't have to. Student trustee, yes vote. Thank you. All right, Trustee Wright, 5.5.
My concern here is there's one speaker that's talking on August the 13th, and he's being paid $8,000 out of a general fund. That's pretty expensive. If we want to save some money, here's-
Yes, there is a correction to that item.
Okay.
Actually, there are three speakers that will be, upon your approval, be speaking during our professional development week. The one that you refer to is Sean Harper from USC.
Correct.
And he's one of the top national speakers on race. The institution is going to be spending a lot of work in this coming year on race, inclusion, and equity. And so the theme this year is that we have Sean Harper and also Audrey Dow from the campaign for college opportunity. The correction is that the funding is coming from a grant. We initially put it in as general fund, just as a hold, not, not receiving approval from the granting agency to, to fund these speakers. In fact, they ended up recommending these speakers for us during a review.
So it'll be a grant?
It's grant-funded, yes.
Grant-funded, okay.
All of, all of the speakers, the three speakers are grant-funded?
That is correct.
They're all coming out of the IEPIC seed grant.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a quick follow-up. I think, thanks for that. Oh, did someone else want to speak? Oh, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I wanted to ask you-
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, this was- What? It says motion to adjourn on here. Okay. So these three speakers are speaking together in one day, or over the course of-
The, the third speaker, whose name I do not have in front of me here, so it's not Sean Harper, it is not Audrey Dow, is going to be speaking at our laser week. And so that speech will be directed entirely toward our students. The other two are in my opening session.
So I think it's mollified us that, in part, that it's gone to the category, or it's grant-funded, and it's not coming from the general fund. I don't, don't view it as any way in opposition to the source of the speaker or the institution, which is they're our neighbor and out of just regular duties of their jobs, I thought they would, would come here. But the, the grant expenditure, is it going to them personally, or is it going back into the USC foundation? Where is the grant funding going?
I would have to refer to the contract. I believe it goes to the foundation at USC, and also to the foundation for college opportunity, rather than-
Maybe you could let us know, I'm just curious.
Them as individuals, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, any other questions on 5.5? I think we have a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Lang. Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right, we're on to our general action items. 6.1, we just heard a presentation on the FY 1920 tentative budget. Do we have a motion to approve the tentative budget? We have a motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any other questions for the administration? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Tendative budget is approved. 6.2, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project, Material Testing and Inspection Services, an amendment to CEM Lab Corp. Is there, amendment number one? There's a motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions on this item? No? No, let's go ahead and vote. Item carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Six point, excuse me, 6.3, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project, Change Order Number Five, PCL Construction Services. Motion from Trustee Wright, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions? I had one. I had an exchange with Chancellor Burke on this. I kind of knew the answer, but just thought I would check in anyway, because on, I think, I think Liz has left the room, but the Saddleback Foundation had, I think they've committed $500,000 to the stadium. And I know that the, we've had some personnel changes there over the last 10 years, but the stadium itself, the idea of the stadium, has been known by the foundation for over 10 years. So I just wanted to know if there's any progress at all, because it mentions the scoreboard here, in getting anyone that's ready to step forward with naming rights in exchange for a donation. Go ahead, Dr. Stern.
We have actually formed a naming committee, and we have created a task list and a work plan, first compiling potential candidates that we want to approach, and then marketing materials with which to approach those folks, and then developing customized asks for each of those folks in those approaches. We've also engaged in discussions with potential two different brokers who actually do this sort of work, that is, they arrange for partners in naming. So we're exploring lots of opportunities. I will say, we are a bit late to the game. I have been told that it is much-
What's the timing? Are we too late?
Yeah, I've been told it's much better to do this before you break ground, because then the partner can be part of the construction plan in terms of visibility. Nevertheless, we're moving forward, and if it means we're naming pieces of the stadium instead of all the stadium, we're going to keep moving forward. There's nothing to stop us at this point.
Okay, so is, there's an accelerated timeline on the committees you formed?
Well, as the launch of the stadium has been pushed out a little bit, we, we can be a little bit more generous in creating that timeline. But we're aiming to potentially be engaging with partners by the end of the calendar year, have a partner in place by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, great. Better late than never, I guess.
Indeed.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on 6.3? No, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.4, Saddleback College Stadium and Site Improvement Project, Division of the State Architect Inspection Services, Nolan Construction Services. We have a motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Jay to approve this item. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.5, Fiscal Year 2021, 2022, five-year construction plan and IPP, FPP submitted to the state chancellor's office. And we have a motion from Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Jay. Anything the administration wants to say on this, or?
I think this is our annual report that we have, that we're required to do. So it's showing our priorities for the next five years. We have two FPPs, which are final project plans that we are submitting for state funding. The first time that these would be available for state funding would be 2122. And so the two buildings that we have, one at IBC, which is the A200 renovation, and then here at, I'm sorry, that's, it's the, it's the B300 is the FPP. And then for here, it's the science math building are the two FPPs. And then we've also done two IPPs, which are the initial project proposals that we're submitting, one for Saddleback College, the TAS building renovation, and then the A200 building renovation at Irvine Valley College. So in order to get state funding, we have to go through this process. The IPPs is the first phase. If the chancellor's office reviews them and deems them appropriate projects, then they will give us the go-ahead to turn them into FPPs next year. And then the FPPs, if they are approved by the chancellor's office, and whether or not they score high enough, then they get submitted to the Board of Governors as a recommendation to the Department of Finance. But like I said, those two projects are for 2122 funding, and then the IPPs would be 2223.
Okay, thank you for that. Trustee Wright?
The one question I have for the science math building, which I think it's great that they're going to renovate it, is what are they going to do for the classes that meet there, the math and computer science classes? Are they going to have to move them to a different location, or has that plan been thought about?
Yes, so the, the classes that are currently existing in there, we would have to swing, provide swing space for those classes, because the plan is to tear down the science math building and rebuild a new building that's smaller than the existing one. There are new classrooms that are going to be going into the Gateway Building, and then there should be some room available in the Student Services Building when Gateway opens as well. So we haven't quite worked out exactly all the logistics of where that swing space will go, but we do know, and we have preliminarily planned for that swing space.
I knew that the Student Service Center had been thought about, so, okay.
All right, Trustee Lang.
Yes, just out of curiosity, any indications from Governor Newsom's budget in terms of where the state's going on, you know, funding of these kinds of projects?
Well, I think the best indication is that they put all projects in the budget this year. So, you know, as you may recall, we've had, the Gateway Building was in the January governor's budget, and that budget was basically prepared by Governor Brown's staff. Both the Assembly and the Senate put all projects in their budgets, and so it was going to, you know, the, the turning point was whether or not, when it went to the conference committee, if any of those would fall out, and they all stayed. So I think that is a good indication that Governor Newsom is supportive of the projects and understands that the longer you don't fund them, the more costly that they get. So we are hopeful. You know, I will say that the projects that we're submitting as IPPs, if they're approved to move forward, they will more than likely be scored under a new scoring metric that the Board of Governors is getting ready to approve for capital outlay. Fortunately, we have primed these IPPs, I think sufficiently enough to try to maximize the points on those. Since I'm chair of that committee, I kind of had inside knowledge of what's coming, and so I made sure that we built our programs to maximize the impact of that. So we'll see what happens moving forward with those.
All right, thank you for that. And Trustee Witt?
When it says the proposed project will be renovated for the existing deactivated, as you know, my favorite task building. So the task building will house what you have stated. And now that it's being renovated, what's the end date for this one? Do we know? Because now you got to go to the FPP, and-
Several years from now.
Several years from now. That's a good answer. And the task, the new building, is still set for '22?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Saying no.
25, 26, 2025, 26.
All right, saying no further questions. Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. 6.6, Professional Services Agreements for Task Orders of Audiovisual and Integration- of Audiovisual and Integration Implementation Services with Golden Star Technology and Southland Technology. This is for both Saddleback and IVC, correct? All right, we have a motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. No? Oh, don't vote. Question?
The Gold Star Technology, are they used by other colleges around us? Or did I lose that?
Throughout the state.
Throughout the state? Is that one similar to what the state had deemed for us? Never mind. Because I read that the state has decided certain companies that we're going to use. This is one of them?
Oh, like a CMAS contract?
Right.
I would presume they are, but I don't know for sure. I couldn't find out.
No, I mean, if you presume it, that's fine. I just wondered, because I'm curious now, the companies that we use.
Do you know if they're CMAS? They're not CMAS?
No, we, this was, we did an RFQ, RFP...
Oh, you did?
Process ourselves for this, so this is not a CMAS agreement.
Okay, CMAS.
Okay, any other questions? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.7, we have a series of board policy revisions for review and study. And we have a motion from trustee Wright and a second from trustee Lang. And any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.8, these are board policies that are up for adoption and approval. These came up last month for review and study. We have a motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Wright. Any questions? No, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries by 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.9, Academic Employee and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions.
No changes, but this one does require your readout.
Oh, yes, correct. So, I read it now or after the motion?
You need to read it before the motion.
Okay, so I do have a readout on 6.9, Academic Employees and Classified Administrator Personnel Actions. So, position number one, Director of Learning Assistance, employee Kim DRC, contract dates June 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. The range is 17, the step is 3. Annual salary, $127,884. Transportation allowance, $125. Cell phone allowance, $165. Position number two, Interim Dean of Fine Arts and Media Technology, employee named Scott Farthing, contract dates July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Range 22, step 1, annual salary $151,704. Monthly allowances, transportation, $250. Cell phone allowance, $165. Position number three, Interim Director of Economic and Workforce Development. This is categorically funded, Rupa Mather. Contract dates August 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Range 19, step 6, annual salary $167,268. Monthly allowances, transportation is $125, cellular phone is $165. And the fourth readout is the Assistant Dean for Health Sciences and Human Services/ Director of Nursing, Dominica, sorry, Oliveri. Contract dates July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Range 20, step 3, annual salary $151,704. Monthly allowances, transportation $125 and cell phone $165. So those are the four readouts. Do you want to ask your question? Go ahead, trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, the only thing, I just wanted to thank vice chancellor Viskachil for answering all my questions on this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. So do we have a motion to approve this item? A motion from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Milchiker. I assume you had, you don't have another comment, trustee Milchiker? Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. Someone needs to vote. There we go. By a motion of 6 to 0, the item is approved by the trustees with a student trustee yes vote. 6.10, Faculty Conversion to Canvas, One-Time Stipends. Is there a motion to approve this item? A motion from trustee Milchiker, a second from trustee Witt, and a question from trustee Wright.
How much longer is this going to be going on for this?
So you see it's winding down?
Right.
I believe it goes, the submissions go through the fall of 2019.
Okay.
And you shouldn't see any after that. I have to, I haven't checked the original MOU on that, but we gave them some time to turn the paperwork in.
Right, okay.
But you see it's winding down.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it ends spring 2020. But I think most of the individuals have already submitted, so I don't think there's too many more coming.
So you got another year?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions on this item? Let's go ahead and vote. By, I'm sorry, by a vote of 5 to 1, the item is approved and includes a student trustee yes vote. 6.11, Saddleback College, no, sorry, South Orange County Community College District, Classified Personal Actions.
No changes?
No changes to the item. We have a motion from trustee Wright, second from trustee Milchiker to approve the item. Any questions on 6.11? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. Item is approved by a 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.12, Non-Bargaining Unit, NBU Personnel Action, Regular Items.
No changes?
No changes to the item. Is there a motion to approve 6.12? Motion from trustee Witt, second from trustee Lang. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries by 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. And wrapping up our general action items, Adjustment to the Police Officers Association, POA, Salary Schedule for 2019 through 2020. And we have a motion already from trustee Jay and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries by 6 to 0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Moving on to reports, Saddleback College and IVC Speakers. 7.2, Staff Response to Public Comments From the Previous Board Meeting. Do you, anyone from...
And that is included?
Saddleback, want to say anything?
I really have nothing to add unless there are questions.
I appreciate that you put together the response. I think that's, it's important to get the, to communicate to the public on this issue. We had concerns raised about it the last public session of the board meeting. And I think we, this is a response to that. And some of us, I know, have been communicated to as well about that issue. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are...
I had one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Wright.
I had one comment. As I was reading through it, it says that on April the 26th, 2018, Dr. Stern was invited to tour the gallery. Shouldn't I say 2019?
That is an error.
Okay.
Sorry, trustee Wright.
And he's, he's not even an English major. But he cut the number. Good job. Good catch. All right. 7.3, List of Board Requested Reports. 7.4, Triple CT Student Trustee Member Election. 7.5, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.6, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.7, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. Okay, moving on. Kicking us off from the administration and governance groups is Saddleback College Academic Senate. All right, very good. Thank you for that. Now, next, we have the Faculty Association.
No report.
Wow, it must be summer. All right, next up, we have the IVC Academic Senate, right?
Yes, I'm here for June. No report.
All right. Who is going to break this trend? Could it be the Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services?
No, no report.
All right. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources.
No report.
Oh, boy. All right, Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
You already approved all my reports.
Oh. I consider that a no report. And next, we have IVC Classified Senate.
Sorry, it's me. So, yeah, I did. It's my final report, so if that helps at all. So next month, Amy Hunter, our new Classified Senate President, will be here instead of me. So I want to thank everybody for supporting our Classified Senate here for the past two years. And just a little overview of what we've done, I'll do it really quickly. We've held five different summits for professional development. We've included topics like FERPA, Cultural Competency, Effective Communications, and our most recent one last month, or earlier this month, was on Strength Finders. We've hosted a learning lunch series on like stress management, Adobe Forms, Tips on Workday, Health and Wellness, Public Speaking, even the Emergency Chair Demonstration. So we're just putting out there what, you know, people need, the information people need, we're trying to get it to them. And also, our senate has participated in all our campus and appropriate district committees. We've had committee training for those who are sitting on committees. And we've looked at the Classified Rule and Guided Pathways, and we've made strides to improve our student, the student success at our school. Through that, we've, most recently, we just applied to be a caring campus through the IEPi. And so hopefully that will go through. And other than that, thank you, and I will not see you next month, but good luck.
We're going to miss you. Did a great job.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
You were great.
Thank you. All right, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
Good evening, trustees and chancellor Burke. Couple items to report back. Last month, we donated part of our meager budget that we have to the Foundation for a Student Scholarship in the amount of $500. We try to do that each year. That student was honored during the scholarship ceremonies in May. And then at the end of May, we held our annual flower sale at commencement. We generated about $1,700 in cash profits that will go towards next year's scholarships for students and staff. We will probably run another $500 for a student and then a $500 for staff scholarship as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that and good work. And closing us out once again, CSCE president, Scott Green.
I just wanted to mention that CSCE has been in a lot of talks with the district representatives of late. Deep into talks, a lot of it has to do with numbers. I've never been really, you know, one of my strong suits has never been math, so it's made me a little bit dizzy. However, with the talks that CSA has had, I wanted to recognize Dr. Cindy Viskachil and executive director Kim Wittes, who will always defend the interests of the district and will always defend the district's positions. However, having said that, they have kept conversations and discussions going so that we actually come out and work out remedies. It's such a refreshing change to have where someone is still willing to speak and to talk and hold conversations to solve remedies. And that really is the collaboration between the district and CSCE, and we really, really appreciate that. Also, we won't see each other until next month, but I wanted to wish everyone a very happy and safe Fourth of July.
Thank you for that, and I ditto that sentiment. So have a good evening, everybody.